...... Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meeting is duly advertised and answered by our press. Issue of November 21st, 2014, and April 16th, 2015. All municipal clerks, town chiefs, and boroughs have been in the regional high school district after due to the requirements imposed, and notices have been made. Okay, minutes approval. Uh... Motion for the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Voice? Discussion. So you done, Mr. Voice?
Mr. Acapola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Bankdouger?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sittera?
Yes.
Mr. Borla?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, uh, report, superintendent's report.
Alright, so obviously, a number of folks are here for student recognition, and we're gonna open that up, or call Ms. Morton up. Each year, one of our students within each high school is recognized with what's known as a caring award. And these individuals will be recognized within their schools as we call them up later. But we wanted to open the presentation this evening with the videos that these six individuals submitted to the county, because I think it's indicative of the sort of community service and positive contribution that our students make, day in and day out, to the greater Monmouth area. So, Ms. Morton?
I both are Ben Hamey's senior at Coltsack High School. I'd like to begin by thanking Ms. Kenny and Ms. Vandebus, along with the rest of the Guidance Department at Coltsack High School, for nominating me for this very prestigious award. It's an honor to be nominated, and I couldn't be more thankful for all their help and support through my time at C N H S. Over the four years I've spent in high school, I have had the opportunity to be in numerous clubs and organizations that have allowed me to better myself as both a student and a member of my community. One such club is the Juvenile Conference Committee, JCC for short, which is run through the Freehold Visonage Court system. As a member of this committee, which is a board of five people, we hear and determine the next course of action for first-time offending juvenile violence. Now, as a first-time offense, there's usually small cases, nothing major. But what we do is, we talk to them, and we understand what the problem is. A lot of times, it's an underlying issue in school or at home, and we discuss these issues with these students and kids, and determine the next course of action for them, so they don't continue the detrimental behavior that they have gotten themselves into. Through this program, we have seen a lot of kids, and it's very heartwarming when we bring them back and speak to them again, and they've gone from being a D student to a B student, have a job that they're proud of, that they go to every day. And it's really nice to see them motivating themselves, and being motivated as students and members of their community, and going from destructive behavior to behavior that is gonna help them in the long run. On this committee, I'm also a volunteer firefighter at my local fire company. Being a firefighter is very important, not only because it's a rewarding experience, but also because it allows me to give back to my community. I remember when Hurricane Sandy hit, and then Orissa followed, my company and I, we stayed on standby for many days, we slept at the firehouse and stayed there, and waited in case somebody was in trouble. It's very important for us to be prepared in case anything happens, because the community looks to us to be ready in times of crisis. Along with being a firefighter and a juvenile conference committee, I'm also a peer leader at my school, and I tutor history, which I love. And also, I am the student council president, which is great, because it allows me an opportunity to give back to my school. Again, I'd like to thank the Guidance Department at Coltsack High School for nominating me for this award. It's truly an honor to be able to represent our school. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is David Alphol. I go to Freehold Borough High School, and I'm a class of 2015, and this is my story to why I am nominated for the Caring Award 2015. This past summer, I went down to Tijuana, Mexico, with a church group, and we went down to build a house for a homeless Mexican family. The family was a single mother with two kids, and no idea where the father was, she sold bread out of the back of her car, and made thirty dollars a week. Some nights, she would have to sleep in her car and live in her car. So simply, we went down to build this woman a home. Every morning, we'd start with morning prayers, and then we would head out to the work site. At the work site, it was extremely hard work, mixing cement, laying down a good foundation, and then eventually building up the walls, putting on the roof, and finishing the home all throughout the week. It was truly, really rewarding work. But you can't go down to Mexico and not have a little bit of fun. Every day, we would see these kids at the San Esmeralda finish. They came from the worst areas of Mexico, all over the country, but to be honest, you could never really tell. They were always full of energy, and they were always so excited to see us. They were always ready to be playing basketball or soccer. After all the work was done, we gave the family the keys, we blessed the house, there was still so much to be done. We went back to the orphanage to spend time with the kids, and eventually, we would go down to Rosalee's, where I actually bought a poncho, and we were able to make a trip down to the Mexican beach. The water was freezing, but nobody really cared, because after a long work week like that, it was great just to have a nice refreshing dip in the water. A trip like this really makes you change your outlook on life. You see that a woman, making thirty dollars a week, selling bread at the back of her car, but still so upbeat and such a happy life. What a rewarding trip. And I'll never forget a single person that I met down there. That was truly the greatest trip that I've ever had in my entire life. The hard work, the putting up the house, and the enjoyment of seeing these kids every day. At the end of every night, we were able to see the Mexican sun as it went down, and truly, it was a beautiful sight. I'll never forget Tijuana, Mexico.
I fell into that at eighteen years old, and it's a real touch in high school, and I love helping with music. For the past couple of years, I've been a part of an organization called PACT, which stands for Child Rights and Youth. And as a part of this organization, we raise funds to help impoverished children in India receive education and healthcare. Last year, I funded a walkathon for this organization, and we raised about five thousand dollars for the impoverished children. I like volunteering in this organization and being a part of it, because I like knowing that I can make an impact and difference in another child's life in another country from here. Also, I'm a Girl Scout, and for my Golden Award project, I decided to spread the awareness of the positive in that, the music therapy, through a blog. And also, this past summer, I helped a music therapist at a carnival, world for autistic children. Um, I, me and my friends, we went there, and we played music and conducted activities, and it was very cool and nice to see the children's reaction. They, I think they felt a sense of belonging that they were playing with us, and also a sense of accomplishment that they were able to make music from these instruments, even if they didn't necessarily know how to play, or like a particular tune, or if they didn't necessarily know how to read music. Also, I'm in Town's First Day Squad, and as a part of this First Day Squad, I help the patient, I help transfer the patient, and I help the paramedic, and sometimes I take vitals, like blood pressure and health. Also, I'm currently trying to get certified, so I can do more. And lastly, I'm part of my school's, as part of my school's Slavberg Falls chapter, and as a part of that, we go to senior homes and do makeovers and spend time with them and games with them. And basically, the purpose of this club is bridge the gap between our age group and their age group, and I love helping people, and I love doing all these activities and other my community, and I hope to continue.
Hi, my name is Tricia Bresko, and I am Allen's junior's caring officer. Here in Howl, I'm involved in a variety of things, such as field hockey, lacrosse, any town, really play, crew leadership. In field hockey, I was the first new captain, both my junior and senior year. This year, I assume that I'm still there, because I'm always there to help Allen teammates, cheer them up, and lead them in their direction. Girls' Cross, I received a festival award and a coaches award in my freshman year. For any town, we run a club called What You Could Do, or Wicked, and with this club, each month, we do a variety of community service events. I'm also highly involved and really feel like in Howl, and each year, I always raise a ton of money to benefit the American Cancer Society. Another thing I'm involved in outside of school is special strides. Special strides is a therapeutic giant center for children with cerebral palsy. I'm on the junior team, and we plan an event to help fund these money with families of special strides. All the money goes towards the children's charity, and it really helps their family out by the way. Also, in my church, I run a physical therapy of a word class, and it's for ages three to five, and each week, the children can come into the back of church and learn more Dr. Looking, and it's more on their level and looking for something that they can address that. But I also love the National Honor Society, and looking that I cheer my parents whoever is helping or whatever we can.
If you never let yourself go, you'll never know how far you can rise. I painted this quote on a little four-year-old girl's bedroom wall in my very first project for Paint for a Purpose. The quote was meant to inspire her, but the person it inspired even more ended up being me. My name is Robert Chin, I'm sixteen years old and a senior at Annapolis High School. I'm extremely honored to be receiving this award, and I'd like to sincerely thank my Guidance Department, and especially my Guidance Council for nominating me. Community service is at the heart of a lot of our duty services in the law. In school, I'm a dedicated member of my school's National Honor Society. However, I find that the things I do outside of school are a bit closer to my heart. My most current community service endeavor I am most proud of is Paint for a Purpose. A few years ago, when I decided I wanted to paint my bedroom, the last thing I wanted to use painted a solid color. So I put my artistic skills to use and decided to paint a set of murals on the floor walls of my bedroom. And my room ended up being the perfect representation of me, my very interests, and my crazy personality. Murals of fashion, music, dreams, and memories all feed my creativity and inspire me even today. My room changed my life, and Paint for a Purpose is my attempt at changing other people's lives. Paint for a Purpose is a volunteer organization that I co-founded, that paints murals for children with the hopes that they will be reminded of their younger selves, open to endless possibility and endless imagination. Recently, Paint for a Purpose has been given the opportunity to work with Kings County Hospital in New York on repainting their pediatric ward. There's no one we could think of that needs strength and inspiration more than kids at a hospital. This opportunity is all we could ever look for.
I'd like to take this chance to acknowledge the amazing people who will also receive this award today. Painting that one little girl's bedroom taught me many things, but most of all, it taught me how far I can rise. How far we can all rise, and I must say, I'm in awe of how far we have already risen. Congratulations to all of you.
Hi, I'm Joe Vitale, and I'm a senior at Marlboro High School. Dedicating my life to helping others has always been a main priority to me. Primarily, I'm an Eagle Scout, which is the highest rank in the Boy Scouts organization, and from that, you learn a set of skills that can help you throughout your life, one of which is First Day, which helped me save someone's life back in 2011, and earning me the Medal of Honor. Next, in 2013, I started thinking about what I needed to do for my Eagle Scout project, which I built a school in one of my schools. Also, in order to do that, I had to fundraise ten thousand dollars, and I did it in a matter of two weeks. After exceeding my goal of ten thousand dollars, I fundraised a total of eleven thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars, which helped also build libraries inside each one of the classrooms inside of my school. My school was in dedication to my great-grandmother, who was a teacher for Indigenous Minds in Guadalajara. After the cessation of my school, we had an inauguration ceremony, where I got to meet every single one of the kids that would be attending my school that year, which was a great honor for me to be able to see which kids I would be helping in bettering their education. From my school and my high school career, I've had over ten thousand service hours to better my education, and also dedicating it to helping others. In September of 2014, I received a phone call from the United States Representative of Messengers of Peace, and also the King of Saudi Arabia, stating that I would be one of twelve representatives in the world to receive the Hero Award, which is the highest honor in the Messengers of Peace program. While I was in Saudi Arabia, I learned many things, not only about myself, but about helping others in many, many different ways. Aside from Boy Scouts, I do a lot of volunteer work with PACT, which is the Teen Advisory Committee of Marlboro. What that does is we're able to interact with other kids and help promote different events throughout our county and community. Outside of school isn't the only place I like to do a lot of volunteer work and helping others. I was entitled to sources this journey, which is a club in my school, where we are able to help other people if they are in need of suicide prevention. We are able to be that voice that helps others to seek the help they really need. Overall, I would like to say thank you very much for nominating me to be a nominee for the 2015 Monmouth County Caring Award.
So, are those six individuals here, can you stand up for a moment? Can we just give you a minute? There you go. So, just to give you that permission, we wanted to open the evening with those videos, so I'd now like to call up representatives from Manalapan High School to begin the evening.
Good evening, I'm Adam Angelosi, the principal of Manalapan High School, and I would first like to thank the Board of Education and the Central Office Administration for supporting our students, our staff, and our schools. Without their ongoing assistance, the students, teachers, and coaches would not be able to accomplish the amazing things that we will be seeing here this evening. Now, I'm going to start off recognizing a few of our students for exemplary academic accomplishments. First up, Manalapan High School's math team took second overall in the Shore Math League this season. At the end of last season, the math team finished fifth, but everyone recognized that our team was young, and this year, they attempted to chase down High Tech High School right up until the last match. I will also say that when you look at sports teams, they always go, well, how many seniors are they graduating? We won't be graduating any seniors this year, so we have a very young team coming back again. I've already told them, if they don't take first next year, they're not getting a district medal. Finishing third in the Shore Math League as individuals were Alex Yi and Brian Gu. You guys can come on down here, please. Okay, I'm gonna, because I'm the first one doing this, I'm gonna ask everybody to come walk down to the front when they're coming up now, to receive their medal and shake hands. Finishing second, Eric Fang and Winston Lee. And finishing first was Rishi Bomasani. Second up, one of our students, Tarang Bimnathwala, was formally accepted into New Jersey Governor's School in Sciences. Tarang, you can start heading down. The New Jersey Governor's School in the Sciences is a three-week residential program where students are immersed in intense college-level research. Tarang is not here this evening. Next, and I've seen him, we have Junior John Klitch, was formally accepted into the New Jersey Scholars Program. The program accepts thirty-nine scholars statewide. He will be involved in a five-week period in the summer, while he will participate in lectures, in small groups, seminars, as well as a research project. John, I also need you to stay up here. Stop. I put all these together, so you don't have to get up and down. I think I organized the academic ones well here. Fourth up, the team of John Klitch, Michael Conover, and Kristen Nemaret took first place in the presentation portion of the Regional Sea Perch Underwater Robotics Competition held at Rowan University. I gave them extremely short notice that we were even going in this competition, so I am amazed that they took first place out of fifty-five teams in the research presentation portion. Before I asked you initially to come watch the presentation, I said, oh, the competition, I said, we don't go watch competitions, we're going. And they did us proud while they were there. So, thank you, gentlemen. Next, three freshmen from Manalapan, Max Schustef, Ahili Chatterjee, and Evan Betaglia, took second place in the New Jersey State Thirteenth Annual East Cyber Mission Competition. Their project was to find a solution allowing patients in critical condition who needed controlled substances to receive those medications before reaching the hospital. The team will now compete in the larger regional round. Ahili Chatterjee, like I mentioned, a freshman, took, also took second place at the Monmouth Junior Science Symposium in the medical and health category for her project, A Strategy to Correct Autistic-Like Symptoms in a Mouse Model of Fragile X Syndrome. I got that correct. I will say that at the Monmouth Junior Science Symposium, Ahili was competing a lot against a lot of upperclassmen, so as a freshman, this was a huge accomplishment. So, thank you all. Now, for a little bit of chemistry. A sophomore student, Koor Chen, took third place in the Monmouth County Chemistry Olympiad. Is Koor here this evening? No? It's also important to note that he is a sophomore taking AP Chemistry, and a lot of the students in that competition are upperclassmen who are taking Chemistry. And in Monmouth County, the high schools are extremely, extremely competitive in the sciences. And finally, and I took a lot of what I was gonna say about this from Radica's video that we just saw, so I don't have much to say here, but Radica Chinney was Manalapan High School's recipient of the Monmouth County Guidance Directors Association Caring Award. Radica, come on down. Radica is a senior, and she will be attending Cornell University in the fall. And now, I'm going to hand it over to our supervisor of extracurricular activities, Mr. John Heine.
Just like to say at the start of the evening, congratulations to all the recipients tonight. If you're here, you've accomplished something pretty impressive, so round of applause for everyone's. So, I'm gonna start out with our Boy Scout, Eagle Scout Award winners, and our Gold Award winners for the Girl Scouts. This is something that's near and dear to my heart. I don't probably stealing some of Principal Simon's thunder here, but I come from a family of Eagle Scouts as well, and it was a great experience in my life. First up, Anthony Arado. Anthony led volunteers in creation and dissemination of brochures that highlighted the location of different species of trees along the Adler Trail at Turkey Swamp Park. This trail is over one and a half miles long, and it encircles the lake, that's the center of the park. Our next Eagle Scout, Chris Sansi. First, Chris's projects included building picnic tables and recycling bins at the Vanderburg Soccer Complex in Marlboro, and beautifying that facility. We've also got three Gold Award winners tonight. We have Kimberly Fitzgerald. Kimberly, come on down. Kimberly oversaw the building and helped work on a large storage area in the back of one of our main band rooms. When this came into the school, it was about thirty-five, forty feet long, and I said, oh my God, this is never gonna fit in a classroom. And they made it fit, and it looks fantastic, and that's where we store a little of our band instruments at this point in time. Kimberly, congratulations. Kelly Masada. Kelly did a wonderful job helping to repurpose an old storage room at the Manalapan Senior Center, beautifying it, painted it, and it's now used as a conference room at the Senior Center, so congratulations, Kelly, for that project. Our last Gold Award winner, I don't believe she's here tonight, Jessica Martin. She had the award tonight. Jessica helped to revamp a firehouse on Route 33, turning it into a community center. Jessica was also recognized for this project by the Prudential Spirit Award, because of the size and scope of it, so congratulations to Jessica. We've got several winners here through our band department. Winning for Allshore, recognition for Allshore Jazz Band, Anthony Swatchelli. Anthony's a ninth grader, and was named to the Allshore Band. I know Mr. Moniz looks forward to three more years of this young man on his band. We also have representing Allshore Symphonic Band, Matthew Cho. Matthew is a junior clarinetist. And Matt plays concert piano and has performed at Carnegie Hall. Next up, we have Kimberly Fitzgerald. This is her second time. Kimberly, come on back down. Kimberly was recognized for Allshore Symphonic Band, she's a twelfth creator, and she plays the euphonium. And I asked her what that was, and she explained it, and I completely forgot. She said it's a small tuba. Brandon Quinlan, a senior clarinist. This is his third year making the Allshore Symphonic Band. Officially, Brandon is the captain of our marching band, and is a member of the Science and Engineering Program, and he will be attending Yale University, where he will... Melissa Smith is a freshman clarinist, who according to our band director, is showing great promise. Melissa. Okay. We also have two young bands that are being recognized for their All-State Band Award. Thomas Marshall was an eleventh grader, and he is made the Allshore Symphonic Band, the Region Two Symphonic Band, and New Jersey All-State Symphonic Band. He plays the French horn. Next up, we have Steven Plattman. Steven is an eleventh grader, he was named to the Allstate Symphony. Allshore Symphonic Band, Region Two Symphonic Band, and the New Jersey All-State Wind Ensemble. He plays the trumpet. We also have two award winners from our Family Career and Community Leaders of America, FCCLA. These two winners were gold medalists, winners of the Spring Leadership Conference. First up is Lindsay Deridida, sorry, Deridida. Lindsay's a sophomore. She won a gold medal in the Fashion Runway Evening Wear category. And also winning a gold medal is Julia Farhat. Julia won a gold medal for the Job Interview category, entitling her to attend the FCCLA National Leadership Conference in Washington, DC this summer. And our last two award winners tonight are from our wrestling team. First up is Joe Santa Marcow. Joe's a hundred-and-forty-five-pound wrestler for us this season. He was a District Twenty-one Wrestling Champion. Wrestled very well at Regions and won over a hundred matches in his career at the Allstate. And last but certainly not least, Jake Kaminsky. Jake's a hundred-and-fifty-two-pound wrestler for us. He was a District Twenty-one Wrestling Champion, placed second in Region Six and seventh in New Jersey. He'll be attending Hofstra University next fall.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'd now like to call up representatives from Colts Neck High School.
I would first like to thank the Board of Education and Central Administration for giving us this opportunity to recognize our scholastic achievements tonight. I would like to congratulate the administration from the sister schools in the district and their honorees. I should all be very proud of what we've accomplished. Our athletic awards with individuals, we have a couple of individual awards for athletics. I'm going to announce, introduce first, our head coach for basketball, Lou Pacola.
This award is basically a milestone. A number measures a milestone. Chris O'Reilly is the fifth player in our school history to reach one thousand points. He also does that with his brother, Sean, who is the fourth player in a short school history of sixteen years for us. He's a three-year varsity starter, a team record of fifty-four and twenty-one during his varsity seasons. First team, B-North, the Asbury Park, Allshore Media, and the New Scratch, B-North representative, and third team, Allshore. More importantly, as I said before, a number measures a milestone. A legacy is measured by one's character and commitment to one's teammates. And this is what we at Colts Neck will remember Chris by. His character and his teammates, okay, who he's done so much for during the course of his four years at Colts Neck, but more important, the impact he's had on our younger players. And the number is one thing, but the legacy is far more important than the number. So, congratulations to Chris O'Reilly.
Congratulations, Chris. Now on to our wrestling award. Our assistant coach, Jim Summa, will make the next introduction.
I got the lucky honor of introducing Fred Bomack. I got the pleasure of knowing him for the last, I don't know, four years. He's come in this season with a twenty-eight-eleven record, and he was a key part of many team victories this year. But he came into the district tournament with a seventh seed, and you could tell going into the tournament he was a little bit upset with us. At this point, you know, the coaches and I sat down with Fred, and we really told him that you gotta believe in yourself, and that if he really wrestles to his ability, he'd have a good shot. And I think he listened, but he came in and as a seventh seed defeated the two seed in the quarterfinals, the three seed, and then eventually pinned with the one seed in the finals, and earned himself the Most Outstanding Wrestler Award.
I'd like to personally thank Chris and Fred for giving me my first winter season some of the most memorable moments. Fred had two pins this year that were unbelievable, and the basketball games, hands down, you should go. Worth the price of your, definitely better than the Knicks, that's for sure. So, at this time, I'd like to move on to our team awards to introduce the recipients of the district medals for the Boys' Winter Track. Central Jersey Group Three Champions is head coach, Jim Slims.
We've had some nice seasons in the past, but this is the first time we've actually gone out and won the sectional title, so it was the first for us. We also won cross-country, so we're hoping to get to triple crown and maybe win, you know, all three this season. So, we'll see this spring. I'm gonna call them all up, and you just hold your applause until I finish at the end, and then we'll just clap as long as you want. I also coached with Kevin Heine and Joe Likes. They were the other coaches. Andrew Imbesi, Rick Summer, Rafat Mala, Zach Sipkay, who was third in the sixteen-hundred and also in the thirty-two-hundred, Nick Nagard, who was sixth in the eight-hundred, Dean Rayner, who was part of the four-by-four-hundred team that finished second, Ryan Tompkins was second in the high jump, Ryan Kudoff was fourth at the four-hundred and second in the four-by-four, Kevin Mersch, second in the fifty-five hurdles, and he was part of that second-place team in the four-by-four, Jeremy Brown, first time ever running track, was on that second-place four-by-four team, and Jordan Branner, second in the thirty-two-hundred.
Our Monmouth County Caring Award winner was invited to make it tonight, so I accept the district medal on behalf of Vlad Dolfar. He was a tremendous person. I've had a lot of interaction with him in my first year. That concludes the district medals for Colts Neck High School. Again, congratulations to all the districts.
Let's call it Freehold High School at this point in time. Good evening, everyone. The principals and CCA's who've come before me have given, you know, thanked publicly, members of the Board of Education and Central Admin, and that goes without saying. But I'd like to extend my thanks to the parents. Without you folks, and you've probably, especially with some of the athletes, you've been carting them around and about since they were little ones. And here you are tonight, as proud as anybody for the achievements of your son or daughter, so a hand to you. We have a number of awards tonight. First, I'd like to recognize the National Merit Scholarship finalist. This is an arduous process. It starts with about thirty thousand, and then it gets whittled down to twenty-five hundred. And at Freehold High School, we have several. Michael Gao. I'm not sure if Michael is here this evening. He had an appointment at Princeton, one of several schools that he has been offered admission to. I think it's down to between Princeton and MIT. Tough choice, huh? Lisa Gu. Lisa here this evening. Tell me she's coming. Ellen Wu. Ellen is not only a National Merit finalist, she was as well the grand poster winner for the Monmouth Junior Science Symposium on her independent research project titled "The Role of Siphon in Regulating H9 Myoglass Cell Body Size." I can barely read it, let alone know what it means, but it's... Another National Merit finalist, Anisha Yaram. Nisha here. You heard all about David Alhaw as our recipient of the Guidance Monmouth County Caring Award. To know, come on up, David, to know that was just a part of what he's all about. He leads by example on the football field. He leads by example in the halls of our school. And when we found out he got the Caring Award, what he kept saying about how hot Tijuana was in the summer building this house. And I said, "Yeah, I bet it was hot." He goes, "No, Mrs. Julie, you have no idea." It was so hot. Andrew LaJoy, recipient of the Prudential Spirit of Community Award. Volunteerism is a way of life for Andrew. He is multifaceted. He is a volunteer of the East Freehold Fire Department, and on top of that, he finds the time to give generously for Challenger Sports. These are for kids with special needs. He works during baseball, soccer, and basketball, and told me when I was speaking to him today that clearly he gets more back than he could ever give from working with these students with special needs. I'd like to ask our music director, Mr. Eric Gross, to come to the podium, please.
I would like to recognize two students that successfully auditioned and performed with the Allshore Symphonic Band, Kiara Abreu and Nathan Gligman. This is an accomplishment above and beyond everything else that they do in school. They have to learn an entirely new set of music in addition to what they're learning in school, so it's quite an accomplishment with a rigorous rehearsal schedule packed into a short couple of weeks and then a concert. So, congratulations to them.
A new face to the administrative team at Freehold Borough High School. To my right, we have Jason Longo. He came finally after waiting for a long time, because he had to give notice to his previous district. He jumped into the deep end of the pool on April the fourth, so this is his first exposure to these awards nights. And over a cup of coffee tomorrow, I'm sure that he is going to be impressed by the variety of talent and achievements, because, you know, we just kind of accept it as commonplace, but it really is pretty extraordinary when you think about all the different things that our students have done. Jason will be presenting one award this evening.
Thank you very much. I just wanna say congratulations to all the award recipients this evening. I'm sure you worked all very hard to achieve what you've achieved this evening, and thank you all for coming out. This next honor goes to a young lady in our school. She's a senior. She's a captain on the basketball team. I can't say enough nice things about her from everybody I've spoken to. She's a tremendous, not only player, but she's a tremendous person. She's a leader both on and off the court. She leads by example. She would never, as a captain of the team, she would never ask any of her members of the team to do something that she herself would not do. She also happens to be our recipient of our Short Conference Sportmanship Award, so it's just more a testament of who she is and the type of person she is. She is a thousand-point scorer. Her name is Rebecca Cobb.
Our last recognition tonight is a very extraordinary achievement. A young man, I'm gonna ask him to come up here, please, and I've practiced his name all afternoon. Chadia. How'd they do? Chadia. Okay, well, he's gonna get it right. Chadia is one of twenty-four high school students worldwide, one of four in the United States, to be recognized as a grand prize winner in the Google Coding. An extraordinary achievement. Because I wouldn't do it justice on what the whole process was, I asked him to just speak for thirty seconds to describe it to you, because you need to understand what this meant to achieve this recognition.
Okay, so Google Coding is a competition sponsored by Google. It is to introduce high school students to the concept of open-source programming. What open-source programming is, is you work with an organization online or in person. It's community service through computer science, essentially. So, for seven weeks, I worked with an organization named OpenMRS, which is a medical record system that helps developing countries in Africa and Asia, and I helped develop software for them. And I did this through little tasks, which are basically simple projects that are meant to help integrate students into their community. So, for the seven weeks, I worked on many different projects, the most important of which being software visualization, in which I was able to install the OpenMRS system quickly and efficiently on any computer.
Google will be flying him out the first week in June, second week in June to spend a week at corporate. That doesn't get burned out. Again, everyone, congratulations.
He's also being bashful, because we're about to launch a new website, and at Freehold High School, I had a sit-down, and that young man, I actually sent him the prototype of our website, and that night got back to me with a ton of feedback and thoughts around it. I have my business card here. When you go to Google, HR, PR, whatever you need for your startup, I've got you covered. But I thought it was extraordinary to be able to have that conversation with the student and be able to get real-time input back from him, which was literally same night. So, again, a representation of some of the extraordinary things that you just did. We will turn it over to Marlboro High School at this point in time.
Good evening. My name's Sean Boylan, Principal Marlboro High School. Before I turn the floor over to Mr. Roddy and our CCA, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Sampson for affording us this evening to recognize our students and our athletes here tonight. This night is always amazing to me to see the accomplishments that take place in our district. So, congratulations to each and everyone. You're very proud of that. At this time, I'd like to have Mr. Roddy come up and acknowledge our students at Marlboro High School. High School.
Good evening. Sorry. We're going to start off with two of our Girl Scouts that won the Congressional Award. The first one is Emily Busini and Elena Ashenfar. And we also have two students that received their gold award for Girl Scouts. The first one is Sharaya Bendri. Sharaya created a sustainable living garden for underprivileged and emotionally challenged children at the Katari Day Camp. And our second gold award is Lauren Kaiser. Lauren created emergency medical information cards for the adult communities in Marlborough. We also have two Eagle Scouts at Marlborough this year. Our first Eagle Scout is Kyle Navarro. And for Kyle's project, he built some stairs at the Katari Environmental Center and helped build fourteen feet of boardwalk through some marshlands. We also have Stephen Chekai. Stephen built three recycling bins and a flowerbed at the entrance of the Marlin Estates Park Okay, this year, our DECA chapter had one state champion in business finance, Peter Next, I'd like to call up David Lundie, Gabrielle Farina, and Alexa Maltese. These three students are a part of our, they won for the New Jersey Natural Gas Can Serve to Preserve Kids and Conservation's Video Contest. It was a project in Mr. Will Hornson's film class. Their video featured three energy superheroes that are charged with protecting the resources at Marlborough High School. And as you saw by the video earlier, our Monmouth County Caring Award at Marlborough And for the athletic side of Marlborough, I'm going to call up Ms. Kathy Pearson. She is our gymnastics coach. The gymnast that she is going to introduce was unable to attend the fall district medal ceremony. But when you hear her accomplishments, she really needed to be recognized at this awards ceremony. Ms. Pearson.
I am here to honor Melissa Astorita. Melissa, come on down. Melissa is a freshman who immediately made her mark in Marlborough High School Gymnastics. During the season, Melissa broke the school record on all four individual events and then the all-around. She then went on to win first place on vault at the Shore Conference Tournament, first place on balance beam and all-around at Central Jersey Sectionals. And at the overall state tournament, Melissa won fourth place on balance beam and fifth place on vault and the all-around. Melissa was also selected to the first team all-district, all-shore, all-section, and all-state. It has been an honor and a privilege to coach Melissa.
Something tells me we're going to see her in the future district medals ceremony. Now, I've been a CIC at Marlborough High School now for nine years. And I'd like to call up Mr. Brad Higginson, who gave, the people he's going to introduce, gave me my first state championship in my nine years of Marlborough.
I want to thank the Freehold Regional Board of Education first for having us here. It's really an honor to be a part of this and to be amongst so many extraordinary young people. Congratulations to all the award winners tonight first. Also want to thank Marlborough High School's administration for being so supportive of us the entire season. Just a pleasure to work for them. This group of young ladies I'm going to bring up here, not just exceptional athletes, but also exceptional young people of great character. And it was just an honor for me and a pleasure for me to be their coach this season. They begged me not to bring them up one at a time, so I'm going to bring them up by class. That's a little easier. First, our two freshmen, Jessica Broad and Isabella O'Hare. Okay, our sophomores, Jen Angeloni, Jamie Garringer, Julian Krantz, and Molly Weiss. Our juniors, Jen Baldieri, who couldn't make it tonight, Tatum Evans, and Jesse Icambellis. And our three seniors, Kristy Casali, who is headed to University of Michigan next Danny Mark, who is headed to Indiana University next year. And our thousand-point scorer this year, Nicole Shatsky, who will be continuing her basketball career at Stockton College next year. These young ladies again had a phenomenal season. They captured the 2015 Central Jersey State Championship this year.
And that concludes Marlborough.
I'd like to call Howell High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the administration of Howell High School, Mr. Charon, Mrs. Tower, myself, and Mr. Browman, we're extremely excited to be here to honor the Howell High School students that have received awards. I too want to thank the Board of Education for their ongoing support, as well as Mr. Sampson and our central administration. At this time, what I would like to do is also acknowledge all of the students out here this evening who have received awards, and as Mrs. Jewell did as well, and their parents. So thank you very much. Without further ado, I'm going to hand the microphone over to the supervisor of extracurricular activities at Howell High School, Mr. Pete Mehan.
Thank you, Mr. Browman. And thank you, everyone else here, for showing up. It's one thing to stand here at the podium and give out accolades and especially acknowledge these young men and women here today, that when they accomplish something that are really in their comfort zone, it's another for them to walk up here and accept this reward. I think we should give it to them for just being able to show up here and receive it. Nice job, ladies. The first person I'd like to bring up here is Miss Tricia Gresko, our Monmouth County All of you here this evening, you could see Tricia had a two-minute video. It was a complete, right now, bio of everything she accomplished. She is a tremendous young lady, and she's going to do great things moving forward. She'll be attending Villanova in the fall, and I'd like to give it up for Miss Tricia Aaron Trample, could you please join me here at the podium? Aaron's one of our basketball players. His coach did not be here this evening. He asked me to read this for you. Many young men will step onto the basketball court with the dream of achieving a thousand points in their high school career, but very few can actually claim that title. This can only be attributed to Aaron's hard work, dedication, and commitment to excellence. For young men that have Aaron's desire to achieve success, the sky's the limit. It's important to know that even though Aaron reached this goal, he was the ultimate team player. The interests of the team came before his personal triumphs. This is a bittersweet end to Aaron's high school career, but this is only the beginning of what he will hear and read about in the next chapter of his career. One thousand fifteen career points. He's the fourth male athlete and sixth athlete in Howell history to reach the thousand-point marker. When Aaron reached a thousand points, it was pretty incredible. We had moved into the brackets of playoffs. And in that round, we were moving forward, I think we were down by twenty points? Twenty points at halftime. And Aaron actually put the entire team on his shoulders. He brought them back. We ended up winning the game. And in that game, he scored his nine-hundred-and-ninety-ninth point. I couldn't imagine Aaron not winning that game and ending his career at nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine. Not only did that happen, because of Aaron's efforts, we were able to host our first-ever NJISA tournament game for the boys at Howell High School in our entire history. So the first game we ever played at Howell. It was a packed, sold-out gym. I've never seen anything like it in my entire life. Our kids were outstanding, and if you were there, it was something to see. They titled it Silent Night. It was up all over our school the entire day. And the kids entered the gym, they did not make one sound. And we had Hillsborough walk in, their fans were excited, and our kids were all dressed. They took up one entire side of our gymnasium. Not one sound. Aaron hit a three-pointer to go over a thousand points, and the roof came off the gym at Howell High School. It was absolutely incredible. The AD and the guy, he couldn't believe how well I did. I want to congratulate you. Nice job. Kyle Halbauer, could you please join me at the podium? Did you ask Kyle? Coach Daly did send me something to say very nice about you too as well. Kyle's all about taking a team when it comes to his stats. He had a hundred-and-twenty-three goals. More impressive was his hundred-and-eighteen career assists. He finished the season leading his state in points with eighty-six. Put his team to their first state finals in school history. He's the type of player that every coach dreams of having. He's a role model on and off the ice. He was selected by the coaches in his division as the overall MVP for the division. Kyle has been selected to the first team all-state. He's first to play, he's the first player in Freehold Regional District history to ever be named first-team all-state in hockey. He was also named first-team all-shore. Kyle, I was a site supervisor for hockey before I came to CIC here, and I've seen some pretty special things, especially in our first season, but you definitely surpassed that. Everything Coach Daly said is definitely true about you, and you did an excellent job the entire year. We actually played in the finals at the Prudential Center. It was an excellent, excellent night. If you were there, you know what I was talking about. Our entire division represented the state finals. So not just one team from DA North showed up, there were three teams. And we all wanted, we all worked towards winning it in the division. Howell did not win the game, but I'll tell you what, it was heck of a job by the team and Kyle. Kyle, congratulations. At this time, I'd like to call Coach Gagliano to the podium and let you know about his very special wrestlers and his wrestling team.
Thank you. These two individuals that I'm going to call up led the Howell Wrestling Team to a twenty-six-and-two record, first place in the Paulsboro Tournament, first in the Newnuls Group Five Central Jersey finalist, and first in A-North for the tenth consecutive year. They finished number one in Monmouth County, number nine in the state overall. This is our one-hundred-and-six-pounder. He had thirty-seven wins as a freshman, first place at the Paulsboro Tournament, first at the Brick Memorial Tournament, first in the District Twenty-One Tournament, third in the Region Six. A New Jersey State qualifier, all-district first team, all-shore made his second team, and he was voted for the Shore Conference Wrestler of the Year, freshman Kyle Slendor. Also, this is a junior, he finished the season with thirty-three wins, eighty career wins. He was our captain of the team, first place in the Paulsboro Tournament, first in District Twenty-One Tournament, second in the region, top twelve in the state in New Jersey, first team all-A-North, first team all-district, second team all-Monmouth, third team all-shore, and set a new school record in eight-second pin, junior Anthony Gagliano.
At this time, I'd like to bring up Mrs. Regina McGowan to the podium.
Thank you so much. The first group that I'd like to call up are the students who were accepted into the New Jersey All-Shore Chorus. They compete against thirty-seven different high schools in Monmouth and Ocean County. And you can start walking down. And this group, and they're chosen from that audition. So the All-Shore Chorus for this year consisted of Emily Bennett, Lauren Carter, Brandon Motherway, Brianna Stout, David Sherman, Leanna Stantana, Olivia Haynewald, Oscar Licham, Sal Merdolo, Vincent DiSeno, Rebecca Bass, Lindsay Charon, Audrey Chu, Matt Donzella, Kalen Filardo, Katie Langen, Sophia Lukinov, Brian McDonald, Michael Olson, Megan Peterson, and Kristen Ruttigliano. So we're very proud. We had twenty-one students in the All-Shore Chorus this year. Following that, we had auditions for the All-State Chorus, and that's competing against every high school. We've been doing exceptionally well lately with our all-state scores, which has garnered us some really wonderful, some different honors and activities. Due to our high all-state scores, we were invited to sing at Carnegie Hall with Jackie Ivanco, the winner of America's Got Talent this year, among other artists. And then we were invited to sing for President Barack Obama in December. So we had a terrific time there. We performed at his holiday party as the entertainment for the guests, and then he requested a private performance for him and the first lady. So our students, he shook every student's hand and sent them all pictures of the event, and it was very, very special for them. So here come those students and the members of the New Jersey All-State Chorus. Leanna Stantana, who placed first in New Jersey, David Sherman, Vincent DiSeno, Lauren Carter, Sal Merdolo, Lindsay Charon, Alex Cusmano, Brian McDonald, Brianna Stout, Kalen Filardo, Emily Bennett, Emily Boyle, Katie Langen, Kristen Ruttigliano, Leah Sando, Matt Donzella, Michael Olson, Oscar Licham, Rebecca Bass, and Sarah Schuman. So we're very, very proud of those individuals. It's been a terrific year for us. I just have one more. Once we receive our scores from all-state, the top ten percent are invited to apply to all-eastern and all-national. So we had two students who placed in the top ten and traveled to Tennessee to perform in the all-eastern choruses. The whole East Coast... in the All-Eastern choruses, the whole East Coast of the United States, and that was David Sherman and Vincent DiSeno. Who, following that, were accepted into All-National Chorus, and they recently traveled to Orlando to perform in All-National. And they make us very proud with their incredible talent. Thank you very much.
At this time, could I please have Mr. Anthony Lamaldi join me?
My band's gonna perform for the Queen next month. I tried that joke in December, it went a little better this time. As some of you may know, some important members know me, and my administration knows me, I'm kind of into sports as well, so I'm very much aware of competition. But music is a little different. We don't compete, but we kind of do compete. So before I call up my All-shore members, I want to let you know that Howell, this is the third year in a row that Howell is the most schooled representative on the stage in both jazz and symphonic band this year. You guys can start coming up as I call your names. Carolyn Cortnhaus, Brianna Wyman, Justin Perez, John Lamaldi, Alexandra Ramirez, Megan Smith, Jessica Seawall, Lorenzo Bedore, All-shore Jazz and Symphonic Band, Leah Klein, Jeffrey Smith, All-shore Jazz and Symphonic Band, Region Two Orchestra, Diane Danche, All-shore Jazz and Symphonic Band, Olivia Ferraro, All-shore Jazz and Symphonic Band, Crystal Cortnhaus, All-shore Jazz and Symphonic Band, John Coisa, Dan Snow, Gray Easton, All-shore Symphonic Band, Region Two Percussion Ensemble, Ben Wies, All-shore Symphonic Band, Region Two Orchestra, Christine Walters, Sophia Troce, and for All-shore Jazz, Ira Matthews, Michaela Navarro, and Katie Ferraro.
Thank you, Mr. Lamaldi, and that will conclude Howell High School Award recipients.
Where are you going, Cacala? You get to host, so we'll now call up representatives from Freehold Township High School.
Once again, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for providing this evening, and the parents for sharing their students with us, and for the students for their dedication and their hard work, and especially their dedication to their schools. It's great, we appreciate it. So congratulations to everyone. I don't believe Sanita could make it this evening, but I want to congratulate her for our caring award. She's a wonderful individual who has done countless things to help many students, and throughout, like I said, not only here, but in India. So she's really a wonderful student if you get to meet her. Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. McAvoy, who will present the award.
All right, thank you, Reg. Thank you. I hope everyone's still doing well. Thank you very much. Congratulations, everybody, who has achieved something, so a round of applause for them, that's awesome. I still want to go back to the Google. The Google guy, that was amazing. I think I understood two words of it, and I was like, "He's really good." So good luck with that, that's awesome. First off, we're gonna do some academics. First off, can we please have our National Merit Scholar and winner, Mark Rinder. And also, we have a National Merit Scholar finalist, Justine Negay. All right, a lot of times on my day now, I start before anyone can kind of enter my office. I'm kind of obsessed with Twitter quotes from a lot of speakers, so I always put one up in my office. Sometimes they come in and I say, "Sometimes you gotta analyze that for me before you come in here." So it's kind of a good start to my day. So today was, each of us has a fire in our hearts for something. It's our goal in life to find it and keep it lit. So a lot of it today, I think that we've seen so far, is that, some awesome things, and working here in this district, I'm very proud of a lot of things that goes on here. So, all right, Mr. Gatsik, our band director, he could not be here tonight, but we have, or we had, and we have, 18 All-shore Symphonic Band members. So I'm going to call your name up, so a round of applause for them right now. All right, and you can start coming up. Abigail Dupree, principal flute, second highest score of all instruments in the shore. Pamela Alitsky, flute, second highest scoring flute. Zachary Dupree, bassoon. And be, sometimes with my introductions to some instruments, some are very not familiar to me, so be some patient with that, too. Dominic Scalia, principal clarinet. Frederick Flores, clarinet. Alexis Junsocken, clarinet. Matthew Bonnet, clarinet. Caitlin Potter, bass clarinet. Nicole Puri, principal baritone saxophone. Matthew Galago, the trumpet. Alexandra Hagar, the trumpet. Christopher Garrick, the horn. Matthew Chernikoff, principal trombone. Gianna Garrick, the principal euphemium. Gianna, I have to meet you tomorrow to go over the euphemium. Andrew DePas, the tuba. Janine Milan, percussion. Sora Kuyor, mallets. And Evan Lewis, the principal timpani. That's always the one that has been the most struggle for me, so I think I got it this time. So congratulations to the band, round of applause. All right, we also have some Forensics members here. Forensics is our speech and debate club. They're excellent. Back in my day, in 2001, 2002, 2003, I was the forensics coach, but nothing like the forensics coach that we have now with Mr. Drummond. So a round of applause for Mr. Drummond, if he's still here. But we do have a few students. The Forensics Speech and Debate Team qualified three students to Nationals. Senior Mark Rinder again, in international extant speaking, and senior Craig Chikis and sophomore Seidro Tool in public forum debate. To qualify, students must finish in the top three in the state in their event and at the New Jersey District Qualifier. Mark, Mark, you can stay for a second, too. You're also rated as the 17th-best extemper in the nation, so that's awesome. And, Mark, you can stay up here, too. And Craig, you can come back down. You have also earned the National Forensics League's Academic All-American Award, so congrats. And, Mark, you can come back again. On April 20th, at the National Science League competition here, we had our AP Science classes at Freehold Township in the district, and in AP Physics, Mark Rinder with a perfect score, 40 out of 40. And, Mark, once again. Mark, you are our national medal winner in physics this year for perfect score. Our last national medal winner in forensics was Casey Moore back in 2012, so congratulations. All right, for FCCLA, we have Mrs. Blair, who will announce some things.
Alexia Valamano and Caitlin McLeilin, please join me. Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America is a career and technical student leadership organization functioning as an integral part of family and consumer sciences education. Members participate in state and national events that assess student learning in career-related fields. Participation in these events helps students develop skills needed to achieve goals and to take steps for preparing for post-secondary options. At the Spring Conference for the FCCLA Interior Design Event, students were given a client profile and were challenged to design a space plan, an elevation, and an interior plan addressing the specifics of the design scenario. Two outstanding students put this together, put together an amazing design scenario presentation that you may one day see on HGTV. As gold medal winners in this event, Lexi and Caitlin were awarded the privilege of representing New Jersey at the National Leadership Conference in Washington DC this July. Great job, girls. Congratulations for all of you. And I'd like to recognize sophomore Heather Paul. Heather Paul was elected to the 2015-2016 State Executive Council of Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America for her second term. As the New Jersey FCCLA Vice President of National Programs and Leadership Development, Heather will serve alongside six other New Jersey state executive officers representing some of the most exemplary student leaders in New Jersey. As a New Jersey state officer, Heather was responsible for planning and facilitating the New Jersey state FCCLA programs for over 2,000 FCCLA members statewide. Only a sophomore, Heather is an extremely bright, talented, and motivated young woman, and I look forward to seeing many more accomplishments from her. Congratulations, Heather.
Mrs. Blair, could you come up for a minute? I just received a letter today to congratulate Ms. Blair that for the nation, she's one of the top 100 FCCA advisors and will be recognized in Washington DC this summer.
Yeah, congrats again, I'm just finding that out, it's awesome. All right, we're gonna start with some athletics here at Freehold Township. I'm gonna call up two of the girls' basketball players who have been very enjoyment to watch over the last four years. This is one of my teams that I've been with, I would say, for the last four years, so it's pretty cool to see them as freshmen and now as seniors after they're gonna graduate. So Sam Famulari, can you please come up? Sam here finished with 1,136 points here at Freehold Township, fourth all-time here, and she has 197 career three-pointers, which is also the all-time record at Freehold Township High School. So a very talented, very solid athlete, and we're looking forward to see where she goes. So congratulations, Sam. Is Tori here?
I'm here.
Oh, Tori, how are ya? Tori Wagner, I'm good, thank you. Tori Wagner, she finished with 1,116 points, which is the sixth all-time here at FTHS, and had 829 rebounds, which is the third all-time in school history. So well done, and congratulations. And when she was a freshman, when I first met her, she was also that tall. All right, for some of the other sports here, I have their coaches here. So for wrestling, first, can Coach Gata please come up?
First wrestler that's gonna get recognized tonight, he was a captain for us. He's senior, he was 20 and 4 this year, and it's amazing, he set a state record. He holds it with two other people, the fastest fall in the state of New Jersey. Fall, for you guys that don't know wrestling, is a pin, match is over. And the funny thing about the whole thing is that I didn't even see it. It happened so fast, pinned the kid in four seconds, off the mat. It's kind of amazing that it happened, that that even happened, but Jake Elias, come on up. Next wrestler that I'm gonna talk about, senior, once again, captain. He was 22 and 4 on the season. He was a four-year starter for us. He was First Team All-District, First Team All-Monmouth, District 21 champion at 160 pounds this year. You know, a couple of things, it's funny, that I was talking to him before this, I just realized that he had just as many knee surgeries in his career as he had losses this season. So, Nino Gagliano, come on up.
Nino also, too, when I first met him as a freshman, I think he weighed about 100 pounds, maybe. So if he's up to the 160s now, that's pretty good. And Jake, Jake over there, if you ever want to talk to somebody that is a lot older than he says, that is Jake. He's an awesome, amazing fisherman as well, so if you ever want to talk about fishing, he can talk to you that for hours. So, congrats again. All right, we have a swimmer, and I'm gonna ask Coach Bot to come up to talk about him.
Okay, so three years ago, when I was asked to become the head coach at Freehold Township for the swim teams, I honestly didn't know what to expect. I was given the knowledge of some of my athletes due to prior coaches, but I was given some information about a young man named Robert Griswold. Now, little did I know at the time that Robert would become one of the most talented, passionate, and inspiring athletes I've ever met and ever coached in my life. Robert was born with cerebral palsy, but that doesn't stop him. During high school swim meets, he is the loudest individual on the team and on the pool deck, and he's the most polite person you're gonna ever talk to, and probably the hardest worker out there. Robert competes against those without, with, and with disabilities. So this year at Shores, he placed 11th in the 100 backstroke, and he holds six American records, at least, that's what we counted, for his classification. And hopefully in May, when he goes to Cincinnati, he is going to be a world record holder in the 200 backstroke. This summer, Robert will be competing at the World Championships in Glasgow, Scotland, before he goes to Carson Newman in the fall. And I hope in 2016, myself and the rest of the world are going to see Robert donning that red, white, and blue in Rio during the Paralympics. It's been an absolute honor to be your coach.
These students also know too, if they're picked, some of the awards are ready, but Rob also will be our male sportsmanship athlete of the year as well. All right, for track, Coach Briggs, can you please come up?
All right, I'd like to start off by thanking the members of the Board of Education and the Freehold Township High School Administration for their continued support of the track and field program here. I have three individuals that stood out this past winter season amongst the many talented athletes in the program and in the building in general. Unfortunately, two cannot be here tonight for unforeseen reasons, but I would still like to talk about them just a little bit, mostly for the sake of bragging. The first will be Nasir Haynes. This year, Nas, as we call him, was selected by the Asbury Park Press as first-team All-Shore, second-team All-State by the Star Ledger for all groups, and first-team All-State Group Four by the Star Ledger. He was the runner-up at the meet of champions in two events, both the 400-meter dash and the 200-meter dash, which was being run indoors for the first time at that meet. He qualified for the meet of champions in three events, the 55-dash, 200-meter dash and the 400-meter dash. He was the short conference champion in the 400-meter dash. He was the Group Four State Champion in the 400-meter dash. He is now the all-time indoor school district record holder of all six schools in the 400-meter dash, breaking the record by someone named Robbie Andrews, who was pretty good. He finished 11th this year at Indoor Nationals in the 400-meter dash. This past week at Penn Relays, he anchored the 4x400-meter relay team to the fastest time in the shore, placing 34th out of 550 teams who ran that event that day. He is, as you can tell, the most accomplished sprinter in program history. Next year, he'll be heading out to Yukon to participate at Division One level in track and field for the Huskies. That's Nasir Haynes. This next athlete could unfortunately not be here tonight for unforeseen reasons. Dominique Penton was also selected this year, first-team All-Shore by the Asbury Park Press. She was the Mammoth County Champion in the 55-meter dash, the short conference champion in the 55-meter dash, the Central Jersey Group Four State Champion in the 55-meter dash, the runner-up Group Four place winner in the 55-meter dash. In the meet of champions, she qualified as a finalist in the 55-meter dash, placing eighth overall. She qualified also for the meet of champions, just like Nas, in three different events, the 55, the 200 and the 400-meter dashes. She set the all-time district record in the triple jump, en route to becoming just the fourth girl over 40 feet indoors in state history. She became an All-American at the New Balance National Championships in March by placing sixth. This past week, she placed fourth and was the second American in the triple jump at the Penn Relays. She will be attending Duke University to continue her academic and athletic career next year. Dominique Pen. This next athlete is here tonight, Kira Roach. She is still just a junior, so we get to brag a little bit more about her this spring and all three seasons next year. This past indoor season, she was selected by the Asbury Park Press as first-team All-Shore. She was the short conference champion in the 1600-meter run, which was her first event, first race back from injury, which was pretty special to say the least. She finished third at the meet of champions in the 1600-meter run this past winter after placing third in the same event the spring before as a sophomore, running 448 for 1600 meters. This past week at Penn Relays, she placed fourth in the girls' mile and first out of all New Jersey competitors, as well as running the third leg on the 4x800-meter relay team that qualified for Penn Relays for the third time in three years. So I'm gonna call it Kira Roach.
Kira, what's your model, excuse me, what's your model time? 449.
459.
I think mine these days is maybe 11. So well done. And now going into bowling, the same thing. I think my average is about maybe 117, maybe, I don't even know if it's even close to that, but this is Coach Orlinsky, and Coach Forster's over there as well, if she would like to come up as well to talk about our bowling teams.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to call up my bowlers right here. For the girls, senior Erica Orenski. For the boys, seniors Dylan Pittman, Jimmy Tumai, Tyler Vento, and juniors Ricky Garvey and Tyce Horr. So we'll start with Erica. Erica is a four-year varsity starter, was our senior captain, and this year, in addition to last year, qualified for the short conference tournament, which in and of itself is a very impressive accomplishment. Erica then qualified, beating out the best 55 other girls in the short conference in all Mammoth County and all Ocean County, made the semifinals, finals, and then beat one of her rivals in the finals to take the short conference tournament. Erica was in Walt District and first-team All-Shore bowler as well this season as well. The boys team stands as the most successful team in school history as well. They won this year a litany of awards, just to run through a couple of them real quick. They won the Bishop R Bowling Tournament, which is the first bowling tournament of the year. It's also the second-largest tournament in the state of New Jersey. They won the Mammoth County Tournament. They won their division also in the county for the second year in a row, and they qualified at Central Jersey Group Four by taking second place, which qualified them for the Group Four State Finals, where they then went on to beat all the other Group Four State Champions in the sectionals. They were the Group Four State overall champions and finished as runner-up in the entire tournament of champions and finished as the number-two team in the state this year. And individually, Dylan Pittman finished as third-team All-State, first-team All-Shore, first-team All-District, and Jimmy Tumai finished as second-team All-Shore and first-team All-District as well. And Ricky Garvey was also first-team All-District.
All right, thank you for everything. I just wanted to congratulate everyone that accomplished something this season. It's been amazing, so a round of applause for everyone. And also to welcome everyone here tonight, but also to a round of applause for our custodians too, who do a great job here in this school. So thank you and have a good night.
Take a two-minute recess, do a board meeting, folks. Thank you everyone for coming out. May I proceed? Good evening, everybody. And in addition to the wonderful achievements of our students that we recognized earlier tonight, we have a presentation on the 2015-16 budget, which is the public hearing. It's a requirement by law, but it is in no way the only opportunity to have these discussions, and my office is available to have those. And as I know most of you in the room, I know that most of you have spent a lot of time with this in preparation of this budget and budgets passed, but for the benefit of those watching online, I will make my way through this presentation. But again, this is not the only opportunity for you to give a call and ask any questions. I just wanted to start with a little bit of the basic structure of a school district budget. Nearly all of a school district's operations, financial operations occur in the general fund. Ninety-six percent of all of the dollars. The other two funds in this financial structure account for, on a much smaller scale, but two very specific areas of the operation. The special revenue fund is for grants, federal, state and local grants, primarily federal grants. This is where NCLB and ID, IEA fall in, and they are targeted federal programs whose funding and expenditures are very restrictive, and the reporting is very heavy on that. So they're segregated and accounted for separately. The debt service fund represents principal and interest payments on the single outstanding bond issue of the district. That was issued about 15 years ago to build a new high school, put additions on others, and it's also not subject to a decision at this point because the community at that time passed a referendum. And what that means is that the community authorized the issuance of bonds to get that money to do that construction project. They also simultaneously agreed to pay back those bonds over the subsequent 20 years. Debt service payments are very level, and that's why we see very little impact year over year in the area of the debt service fund. So as I said, the general fund, when you hear discussion or read things in the newspaper about the school budgets, they're talking about the general fund, and that really houses all of the things that you would naturally think of in a school budget. On the revenue side, let me just orient you to this quickly. On the upper right is the total revenue. It comes in two categories, local and state and federal programs. The upper right is changes in those various categories, and down the bottom four, I have eight communities with a tax impact. The general fund revenue this year is primarily property tax, as it is for many school districts, and certainly this school district. Sixty-four percent of our general fund revenue is through property tax. Now, there's a very specific tax levy cap law in place, and it has been in place for four years since the development of the fiscal year 2012 budget. And what that does is, for the first time, it really transitioned from caps on spending to caps on revenue, which was very much a dynamic that this industry needed to react to and react to very sensibly. What this organization did for the first four years of that was not access all of the cap that was available to us in each of those years. It is primarily a 2% on the levy, but there is an opportunity to defer any levy to subsequent two years and access it later. While the district has not accessed any of that banked cap in the past, this year we are proposing that we access 1.7 million of it, which brings our tax levy to increase of 3.4%. Now, that tax impact on a particular home is gonna be property-specific and even municipality-specific. If you look across the bottom of the page, you can see that six of our eight communities are seeing a decrease in the tax rate for that community. And that has to do with assessed value as well. So for whatever the impact is for you as a specific property owner, you need to look at what your assessed value is and work with your municipality to really understand fully what that means to you as a homeowner. But with six of eight towns going down, that's a good thing, anywhere from 1% or 2% or up to 6% in the case of Freehold Township. The other main player in the local, coming out of the local pot, is fund balance. Now, fund balance is, at the end of any given year, the amount that is unspent is set aside and is dedicated to support a subsequent year's budget. So we have been able to, through the four years since the implementation of the new budget law, been able to use our surplus to subsidize our operations during a time where it wasn't the right choice for this organization, for this community, to access the full tax levy that was available. Over that period of time, we've left, the district has not accessed about $15 million that has been available, but we are proposing that this year. And as we move away from utilizing our fund balance in that way, we will have our challenges laid out ahead of us in the subsequent years, because that item of revenue will continue to wane over the next three years or so. I expect significant reductions in that. On the state and federal side, it is primarily state aid. There are also some other aid categories included in there to a lesser extent. State aid is flat, again, for the third year in a row. There is a funding formula in place, but the state has chosen to not implement that funding formula, and instead, for the third year in a row, to keep the allocations to the districts flat regardless of their changing demographics and other changing costs. The state has its own budget situation, and it'll make the decisions that it feels it's best for the state as a whole. So that is where we are with state aid. The future is very difficult to predict with state aid, because it has changed. It's been very variable, even what funding formula is in place, whether or not they fund it and to what extent they fund it. So it's been very difficult to predict that, and as we're trying to forecast out our programs for the years to come, it's something that we keep a very close eye on. I did neglect to mention one other thing in the local pot that I wanted to touch on. As you can see over in the chain area, it's a $2 million increase, and that's for reserve funding. Reserve funding is some money that's been set aside for a very specific purpose. In this case, it's facility funding, and we are pulling $2 million out of that to do primarily track work. We just completed Freehold Township track recently. Manalcon's track is construction in progress, and we hope to have that completed soon. And we have Marlboro and Freehold Borough teed up for the coming year with two more tracks. There's also some work with fire alarm systems. That infrastructure has been in place in some buildings, in some sections of some buildings for quite some time. We need to begin addressing that in a significant way over a period of time, in a sustained way. We also have intercoms that we wanna take a look at. To the extent that we can, out of that $2 million, handle those major initiatives in terms of the facility over the next year, we'll do that. So that is the revenue picture here. The story of the revenue picture is, for the first time under, in the five years of the new cap law, we are going over the 2% and accessing bank cap, and also fund balance and the future of fund balance and the challenges that that brings with us too. For appropriations, and again, I'll give you a moment just to orient yourself here. In the upper right, or the upper left, sorry, this pie chart represents the major categories of spending in a school district budget in the general fund as identified by the state. You can see the list down the side. In the top right is, within each of those categories, there's need to break it down somewhat, and I've done that. Bottom left is the change in percentage of those respective categories, and this will be the same interface as we move through each category. And bottom right is, how is that money spent? Salaries and wages, purchase services and others. So if we start with the area of instruction, there are, I've broken it down into three categories, regular ed, special ed and other instruction. Other instruction being basic skills, bilingual raise and our sports and activities programs. The majority of that money is in regular education, as you can see, and overall, this area of the budget has been very stable. Education as a whole is changing less than a percent. It's actually going down less than a percent, and that's a factor or a function of a number of things. One of the things that we've seen is our special ed programs. There's been a shift to house a lot of our special needs students in the least restrictive environment, which is in-house, and those programs over the last several years have really been built and built in a very meaningful way by our special needs folks, our special ed folks, right here housing our buildings. And we're starting to see the financial impact of that as well. As you can see down here, that the green area is salaries and wages, and really, the majority of this area of the budget is a salary and wage. It's a salary-intensive industry. In fact, if we look at salaries and wages altogether, you can see that the highlighted areas over here all represent salaries. So it's nearly, it's more than 70% of the overall budget is salaries and benefits. budget is salaries and benefits. The next section to look at is support services. These are all of the services that the district has in place to, that deal directly with the students, to remove obstacles from the path that they need to take to get to their instruction, whether that's the guidance department, child study teams, media specialists, improvement of instruction for the curriculum and curriculum development, staff development, and those areas. The majority of it is in student. The two areas that are in the section of teachers is the improvement of instruction and staff development, which is both curriculum and staff-based. The changes here are modest. Overall, in this area of the budget, is a 2.5% increase, and some of the costs associated with bringing those students back and how some of the supports that are necessary put in place are housed in this section of the budget, which would account for some of that very modest increase. The next section, next largest section, is facility service. Facilities, transportation, administration fall into that 8% to 12% range. Transportation and facility are 10% and 11%, and administration is 8%. But you can see the sub-breakdown here in the areas of custodial, ground, maintenance. The increases in this area of the budget have to do with two things. One of them is $200,000 that we took from our reserves that I mentioned earlier, and they reside in this area of the budget. And that is for improvements to our intercom systems, fire systems, not the tracks. The tracks are in the capital section of the budget. Transportation, overall, there's an increase in transportation of nearly 10%, 9.76%. And what accounts for that is the purchase of 15 school buses, which we have held off on, but we needed to refresh our fleet. We've done that with 15 buses. These are being purchased through a five-year lease. School buses last 12 years, so the first year of that five-year lease payment is included in here, which is why you're seeing that increase. Administration, there's both central-based and school-based administration. The school-based administration is the main office and everything that goes into the main office at the individual schools. Centrally, it's a number of departments, including the business office, superintendent's office, a personnel office, information technology office, which handles all of the infrastructure for technology for the district. This is about 8% of the district of the overall budget. And changes here are modest, as you can see. In the aggregate, it's less than a 1% increase. And finally, in the area of capital, this is almost exclusively the two tracks. There's also some money set aside by the principals in their individual allocations for instructional equipment that they have in their cycle to purchase, but by and large, $2 million for the two-track projects that I had mentioned earlier. Something that we take a lot of pride in is our return on investment and some of the ways that we look at that. This is just an example of some of that information. At the top is how we stack up in various categories to groupings of districts. And this is just the state's representation of this comparative cost-per-pupil scenario. They, we look at this from the state overall, there's 31 high school-only districts, which is represented by the blue bar. The gray bar is districts that have the same socioeconomic background as this district. There are nine of them. I'm sorry, the, yes. And then Freehold Regional is the purple bar. Across, you can see 100% that red line that goes across, that's the state average for those 31 districts. I use that as an anchor, just to see how we stacked up just for comparative purposes. And then down the bottom, as I've done in the past, we've taken our test scores and boiled that down to a cost per passing percentage in each of the test scores against those same groupings of districts. And we fare very well in that area as well. More information of this sort is available on our website, either directly or through links to Department of Education. DOE has a lot of good data to look through, where you can look at it from really all different perspectives, from, you know, advanced placement, participation, to financial information, to academic standardized test scores, a lot of different information for you to get different measures of the performance of the district. And that's for this evening, a concise version of the budget. More information will be, including this information, will be on the website for your review. And as I've said before, please feel free to reach out to me. I'll open it up to any members of the board with any questions.
Obviously, there's a lot of state aid in these budget numbers. And of course, there's a court case going on right now, whether the state is going to have to increase their payment into the pension plan. And so my question is, what do business administrators in the state of New Jersey, what are they thinking about in terms of if the state comes back and has to drastically cut their expenditures by 10%, 20%, whatever it is, what would happen to school budgets in the doomsday scenario, which basically one person has in their hand?
It is unlikely that the state would change state aid projections, state aid figures that they've given us for next year, even though school funding as a whole is a third of the state budget. So if you're going to have any kind of meaningful impact on budget cuts at the state level in order to make room for pension payments, let's say, it would have to touch education in some way. It's not the first time that that type of scenario has happened, where the state releases information to schools in February and March, but they haven't even, they're not even close to having their budget together yet for the next year. A lot of times, it runs right up to midnight on June 30th before they sign off on it. So, and it's always amazed me that they would commit themselves to that, and it's always been something that's been of a concern. What the state has done, when they've released numbers to school districts and then traveled down the road and developing their own budget, they have been able to capture money from school districts by withholding payments from schools of state aid. And when they do that, that makes it available to the state to then appropriate, similar to the way we do, fund balance and balance their budget for the next, for the subsequent year. The downside of it, from the business administrator's point of view, is that it's receivable for us as of the end of the year, and one that never, at least up until this point in time, has ever come to fruition. So each year, unless the state were to budget, you know, 13 months of payments to schools or 14 months of payments to schools and start to pick off some of those receivables, it's just going to perpetually be on the books. So it's an interesting accounting maneuver that happened. It's happened a couple times historically that have brought us to the place where we are now, which is considerable receivable from the state at the end of each year, which is going to probably carry forward until an unforeseen time. Mark, did you? Okay. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Voice. Mr. Smith, Sean always does a phenomenal job of breaking down a very complex process into an easy-to-digest and understand delivery that I think helps both inform and educate the general public about the budget process and public's, so thank you, Mr. Voice. Two quick notes before we go into the agenda section, just to complete my report. I just want to point out that the Freehold Regional High School District, for the second year of the law, has received an Innovations in Special Ed Education Program designation from the Jersey School Boards. That is for a regional assistance program at Marlboro High School, which we started just within the past year. So it's a tremendous honor for us, for one of 10 districts in the state, to receive that designation. I believe we're the only district to receive it for two years in a row. And this Wednesday evening, we'll be traveling to the Monmouth County Workforce Investment Board Dinner in Long Branch, where they will be recognizing the Workplace Training Program from here, Freehold Township High School Program, as the sole recipient in Monmouth County of the 2015 Educational Partnership Award. So I think it's just two nice feathers in the cap for the Freehold Regional High School District. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Samson. Before we deal with the agenda, Mr. Voice?
We have one. We have an addendum for tonight. It's G14, Approval of the Memorandum of Agreement between the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education and the Freehold Regional High School District Bus Riders Association, for the need to be resolved that the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education adopt and ratify the Memorandum of Agreement between the Board and the Freehold Regional High School District Bus Rider Association, dated April 28, 2015. In addition, there was one amendment to the executive session motion, under item number seven. Please also include agency reference number 19 slash 101. Thank you, Mr. Samson.
I'd like to take the agenda in one shot. Motion, motion?
Thank you, Bill. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. Discussion? Okay, seeing none, before we take the vote, just a reminder, the non-unit employees are under G4. Mr. Voice?
Okay, Mr. Acetola?
Yes to the agenda, as it pertains to G4. I vote no on Dona Evangelista.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes to everything except present, taking no action on Mr. Boylan and Jeanette Bruno, also G4, no to Dona Evangelista.
Mrs. Frank Hauser?
On the agenda, I vote yes, except on item E3, because we are receiving the 2% cap and accessing bank cap. I'm going to vote no on the budget.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes, on the whole agenda.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes on everything as it relates to G4, no on Dona Evangelista.
Mr., Mrs. Sotera?
Yes on the agenda, except for G4, no to Dona Evangelista.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes, to all.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Yes to everything except under G4, no to Dona Evangelista.
G4, all items on the agenda have passed, with the exception of G4 as it relates to Dona Evangelista.
Next, we have old business. New business, under new business, I'd just like to thank Mr. Voice for all his hard work. Any other items? Seeing none, can we have a? Motion. Thank you, William.
Do we have a second? All those in paper?
So shall you say, so shall it be written. Thank you for coming.